And so, we wanted to hear what you have to say tonight. I would caution everyone to be respectful of everyone else and not to make any personal comments in any way, shape, or form, except maybe to say please and thank you, and that's nice. Anyway, we also have tonight the Hawkeye, Tanner Cole, I remembered his name this time, and Rob Sussman from Pritchard Broadcasting. And they're streaming it live from the Hawkeye, I believe, and it'll be viewed live on cable channel 18, if that's a city's channel, depends on your TV, I think. So anyway, beginning there, we're going to hear from the candidates. They each have one minute to kind of talk about themselves or their aspirations. And normally, we always begin, it seems like, with the first of the alphabet. So today, we're going to do the same thing.
No. You told me that wasn't gonna happen. You can't stop the schoolteacher in you. So I'm gonna do the introduction now? The, well, my name's John Billups, I'm running for city council. I think I've said just about everything I can say in the previous debates about who I am, but I was telling my fellow running mates that my wife and I are celebrating the anniversary tomorrow, so let me get that in, in case I forgot that card, babe. Anyway, longtime, I remembered it, longtime resident here, but more importantly, active on several fronts, not just in Burlington, downtown Burlington, but Burlington as a whole, care deeply about the community, and I would like to make sure that I do whatever I can to step forward and serve if elected, and do the best I can to help the city realize the greatness that it is. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Scott Deal.
Yes, I'm Scott Deal, run for Burlington City Council for the last eight months, unlike my opponents. But I would like to say that we have a unique opportunity this time. This is probably one of the most important elections that this city has ever faced. We have huge problems, there's no doubt about that, and I don't wanna say, you know, that there's all doom and gloom, but I wanna step up. I wanna step up above what we have seen. We have seen city council people that have done absolutely nothing for the last eight years, and I am willing to do everything I possibly can to help the people. I'm a people person. I'm not about image and all that nonsense, and money and whatnot. I am a people person, and please elect Scott Deal on November 7th.
Thank you. Bill L.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you to BPW as well. I am Bill L., and I'm running actually this time for a couple of reasons. One is that I had the opportunity to serve the city in the past as mayor pro temp and as mayor, and I enjoyed that, believe it or not. Some people will question my sanity about that, but I did enjoy it. I really did, had a good time, I'd like to do it again for that reason. Secondly, and probably more importantly, is I think there's a lot of neat things happening in the city right now. I won't bother to go over that list again, but there are several positives that's happening, and so if you're free to vote that day, I'd take your vote. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Bob Fleming.
Thank you. I'm eager to run again because we're doing so many good things in this community. We have a great city manager, and I think we've got a lot of things turned around in the more positive nature, and I wanna keep that flow going. I am the like Burlington, I'm a fourth-generation Burlingtonian, and I hear some of the negativity here and there, but overall, there are a lot of positives here, and I want to enhance that. So vote for me, Fleming, for city council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Linda Murray.
Thank you, Diane, and BPW Burlington Professional Women. I am excited to be running for a seat on the Burlington City Council. I am awestruck by all the wonderful things that are happening in this community in the past few years. And I looked one day in the rearview mirror, and I realized that I don't have too many years possibly left on this planet, so I wanna make an impact while I still can to a community that has given me so much. I love Burlington, I love Snake Alley, a race I've competed in several times, and I wanna change the image of Burlington, so when people come here, they're not saying, "Why Burlington?", but they're saying, "Why not Burlington?". So a vote for me is a vote for teamwork, which will lay the dream work for building an even better Burlington.
Thank you, Linda. Matt Rinker.
Thank you, Diane, thank you for everybody that's here this evening. My name is Matt Rinker. I'm a local insurance agent here in the community, born and raised. I'm running for the city council because I feel like our community is headed in a direction that is gonna require some vision and some leadership, and I feel like I have the opportunity to provide that. I've been very well involved in our community, both in the public portion and in the private portion, and I've had the opportunity to visit with a lot of people and gather and garner a lot of input, and I feel like that will help me be a good city council member, and that's why I'm running.
Thank you, Matt. I thank you for your introduction. I'd like to remind everyone that you may call in a question, if you have one, to 319-753-8136. And we have someone here to take those calls, and we will ultimately ask the candidates. At this time, we are going to have questions from the Burlington media, and as I understand it, we're going to begin with Tanner Cole from the Hawkeye. And you each have 60 seconds to respond, unless he asks you to be very short. Tanner?
So once again, I have individual questions for each of you. We're gonna start with Billups again. John, your old family business, as you said it, endured two 500-year floods and 11 100-year floods. Even with the flood wall, how much investment downtown by the riverfront can Burlington reasonably expect business owners to be willing to do?
Well, actually, it's a pretty good question. I remember talking to Tanner about that, I thought someone needed to redo the math on those floods. You're right, a bunch of 100-year floods and two 500-year floods. The problem has always been the lift station, and with the enhancements to the riverfront, I think we can hold off the river, but more importantly, if we can protect the pumping station there, that prevents the water coming up through the sewer, which is really the bane of existence for downtown merchants that are along the riverfront. So I think with the improvements that the city is investing in, that, "Come on, merchants, let's build downtown", I really think that the plan is good, that they put in place, and I think it'll work, and then I think we can make our downtown riverfront even better. So I'm really confident about the river wall project. I wish it was there when I was still open, let's put it that way.
And for Scott? So a few weeks ago, you temporarily suspended your campaign, but at the time led the public to believe it was a full suspension. What do you have to say to someone who thinks you're not really in this because of that temporary suspension?
Oh, boy. It was a temporary suspension, and the only reason we had a temporary suspension was so that our people behind me, the committee, could organize and figure out where mistakes were made and where we needed to move forward, and who we could align with that had the best interests of this town. And I am in this to fight. I'm a fighter, I've been a fighter all my life. I'm tough, sometimes people think I'm a little too negative, but I try to bring across the truth, and that is something that needs to be expressed openly, is that there is a truth here in this town that a minority of people understand. So with that being said...
And Bill L. So you spent a lot of years with the fire department. There was an arson in this town earlier this week at a group home, and that's part of an ongoing debate over whether those group homes should have to install sprinkler systems. Should groups like Optima, Opavon, all these groups running these group homes have to pay to install those sprinkler systems? And would that double down on problems those groups are having with budgets that are in jeopardy at the state and national level?
Well, first of all, yeah, sprinkler systems are rather cashy, they cost quite a bit of money, but that's gonna be difficult to answer, and I don't want you to think I'm beating around the bush, but every occupancy and type of occupancy has different requirements. I'm not familiar with those codes today, I've been gone for 17 years from there, so I don't know them like I did. But I will tell you that those places generally had to be protected either with smoke alarms, sprinkler systems, or whatever, depending upon what the occupancy was. Somebody like Optima, or whoever, something similar like that, when you're dealing with people who may be mentally challenged to some degree or whatever, yeah, you're gonna have to have a little bit of extra security there or safety, but I really can't answer that, Tanner, because there's too many variables there.
Okay. Bob Fleming?
Yes?
Your youngest son out of five children is in council meetings pushing for the council to support Memorial Auditorium Plan. You're 86, right? Does your age matter, and when is too old for this job?
That's a good question. First of all, my son being involved, that was a surprise to me, I have no connection to that, and I'll abstain from any votes that reflect that. I think my age is an advantage. I've lived here all my life, I've been blessed with good health, and I see a lot of good things in the community. So regardless of my age, I think a lot of it has to do with your willingness to move forward and try to do positive things for the good of this community, and that's something that I'm really committed to. I've enjoyed doing it in the past, and I wanna do it some more. We have a good town here, I have a positive view on things, and I wanna continue that. Thank you.
And Linda Murray? You've talked a lot about riverfront development in these forums specifically. What specifically should the council be doing to help with riverfront development? What's their role there?
I think our riverfront is a large on-tap area of potential revenue generating awesomeness, and I think that the council can prioritize in the future. I'll admit, I was devastated that we did not move forward on any of those three projects, but then I had to come back to my roots, which is that of infrastructure. Sometimes we have to prioritize, and I'll use an example on myself. I'm a member of the ski club in town, offered a very lucrative ski package, and I really wanted to go, but I had to take a look back and say, "Okay, I've got a driveway that needs done, trees that need trimmed, and a house that needs painted." So sometimes the amenities which are coming, Burlington, don't get me wrong, they are coming, that is part of the council's role, are coming, but we have to prioritize. We need to put our roads, our bridges, and our infrastructure in place first, and then we can do the amenities like a splash pad and things like that.
And Matt Rinker?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna talk about the splash pad again.
Yes.
A week after the council's splash pad vote, engineers got back to city staff with news that the splash pad would've cost about $12,000 a year, not $2,000.
Yep.
Do you still think they made the wrong choice? Was their choice the responsible choice?
Yes, I still think they made the wrong choice. So actually, when I stood where Diane's standing right now, when they were making those decisions, I actually said that when I did my research, the splash pad would cost between $8,000 and $12,000. So I know that was more than what Charlie's original estimation was, but my research yielded that number, so I was already aware of that number when I was sitting here and they were making that decision. At the end of the day, a community has to invest within itself in order to be able to reap the gains of those investments, and the splash pad was an investment to the beautification of the riverfront, it was an investment in the quality of life for the people that live in the city of Burlington, it was an investment in the marketability of Burlington. So yes, I feel, given the cost and the amount of money that was leveraged and the timing, that they did make the wrong decision at that point.
And we're gonna go back around for another round, starting with John Billups.
All right.
You told me that you decided you wanted to run out of a sense of civic duty to Burlington. What skills do you have that directly apply to the city council work outside of a willingness to run?
Well, I think, like many of the candidates here, I think we all have unique abilities that have been garnered over years of experience doing our various jobs. Spent 35 years, started at the age of 13 in a family business, when that, we had all the small business problems, wanted to do big, grandiose things, but limited budget, and that sounds familiar to what the city has right now. But we also figured out ways to do things. We figured out long-term investments sometimes bring short-term results, and the short-term results are beneficial. For instance, the river wall, you asked about that earlier, the one thing I forgot to mention is I'm looking forward to the savings yearly that we will realize by not having manpower and equipment and sand and flood wall barriers up. So I think sometimes you have to look at those long-term investments to realize the short-term gain, which eventually becomes the long-term gain, and that is why. Thanks.
And Scott Deal? You've called the three frontrunners from the primary vote good old boys. After the primary, you told me that Billups didn't put as much work into his campaign as other people running, but based off of that vote, he's the most likely to make it on the council. What is your working relationship going to be like if you're on the council with these people beside you?
Oh, well, that's an excellent question. Every position I've ever had in councils, on boards, civic communities, volunteer committees, I've been called the great compromiser, and I'm not trying to pat myself on the back, but regardless of what I say about my opponents, I do work well with people, very well with people. I'm always looking for what is the best interest of all the people, not just a particular part of the people, the people that some of these people have special interests with. But I am out there, like today, the sanitation workers, I was out there shaking hands and with the sanitation workers and saying, "Yes, I'm with you, and I'm gonna work with my people to help make things right in this town."
Bill L. With your career, you probably have the closest connections to city staff up there. Let's say someone from the public comes to you personally, saying a member of city staff is abusing their position. What do you do next? What's your plan?
Well, I think I've answered a question similar to that one, someplace along the line, but there's a definite chain of command within the scope of the city. I mean, there should be, there was when I was there before, and I'm sure there still is. If I have an issue, or if somebody brings me an issue about an employee, I'm not gonna talk to that employee, I'm gonna talk to the city manager. He's the guy I hired to deal with these, I will work with him as close as I can in resolving that, and if it came from outside, I would ask that the manager also get back to that individual, let them know what's been done, if anything's been done, or what's been resolved, or whatever. That'd be my plan.
And Mr. Fleming? The splash pad grant application was put off for a year by the council last week. Several people at this table with you wanted it approved. Can you explain how that decision was reached?
I think, first of all, the city council hadn't done a lot of background work on that issue, and therefore, were not prepared really to move forward. I think the splash pad down there would be a nice thing to have. However, until we get that flood wall built and get this flood mitigation more under control, I'm in no big rush to go through some of those amenities in the riverfront. I wanna wait till we see the flood wall get up there, and it's not too late then to look at a splash pad or something like that. I think the idea of attracting something that brings young people to downtown Burlington is a good thing, and I hope maybe someday we can do it. Right now, to me, was not the time.
I agree.
If the Memorial Auditor...
He's gonna take my time, I'll let him take some.
I'm a good old boy, so watch out.
If the Memorial Auditorium Plan with Steamboat Days fails, this coming council are gonna be the ones that have to deal with it. What do you think should happen then, if it fails?
I am optimistic it's not going to fail. I am excited that the proposal and the people behind it have lots of energy and enthusiasm. I think that it's going to be successful. I just really feel deep down in my soul that it's going to be successful, so we won't have to make that painful decision. There has been some talk that if it doesn't go, that is prime real estate there, that perhaps a boutique hotel or something could go up. So the council makes the best decisions with the resources that it has at the time, and I'm sure that'll be subject to change effing when we have to do that, but again, I don't think we're going to have to. I feel really optimistic about what's gonna happen with the auditorium.
And Mr. Rinker?
Yes, sir.
You served in military police, and you've shared some opinions about how local police might be able to do their jobs better. What are your opinions on that? Can you share them again? And how should a council person actually go about implementing those ideas?
So the four years I spent actively patrolling with military law enforcement in California, I had the opportunity to learn a lot of things. I'm gonna need a lot more than 60 seconds to go into a significant amount of detail. I will tell you, though, that I worked with United States Border and Customs Protection, the United States Marshal Service, California Highway Patrol, Imperial County Sheriff's Office, San Diego Police Department, and a multitude of other law enforcement agencies, and learned a number of tactics that can be done. It can, the first question we have to ask ourselves, or we have to actually ask the chief of police, is, "We have this expectation of service, what tools and manpower do you need in order to meet that expectation?" And then we need to do the best that we can to get where we need to be on that end. We can't demand a service and then not provide the tools necessary in order to be able to meet that service, or meet that demand. Some of the other things we can do, I'd like to see us bring on another K-9 officer, bring the reserve force up to a full, a lot of number of people, things like that. So anyways, my time's up, I would need another 25 minutes to get into a lot of detail, so I apologize about that.
And then I have one more question for everybody to answer, and that is, "Who in Burlington most needs help, and what help do they need?" And we'll start with John again.
That's a tough one. I'd have to think, I don't think that's a knee-jerk reaction question that I can answer right away. I think there are some citizens that are in need of help, but there are a lot of great volunteer groups that are helping that, such as the Paint-a-Thon that comes on in September. The one thing that I can say about Burlington is never underestimate a motivated citizenship. I think when the citizens are led and inspired, I think we can achieve great things, especially like, for instance, the library, you know, and the citizens decided that we were going to get that done. It happened at a really reasonable cost to the city. And I think some citizen task force might have to be established to help groups like the renters, it's been brought up, or even maybe look at putting Cascade Bridge and quit kicking, on the agenda and quit kicking that can down the road. Thank you.
Scott? I'd like to say, the poor and the taxpayers of this town are the hardest hit in this town. No disrespect to Mr. Billups, but by golly, that's what I've heard for eight months, is the poor people are struggling, senior citizens are struggling, and we keep raising their taxes and pushing them out of their homes. That is disgraceful. If we are a town that, like Mr. Billups and others have said on this board, that we love this town, and that we're gonna do the right thing, and everything's jolly like Mr. Fleming thinks in his condo, expensive condo, you know, the poor and the senior citizens are the ones that are struggling the most, and we need to help them.
Thank you, Scott. Bill L.
Wow, that's a tough question, but I guess the first thing that came to my mind was that people that have mental illnesses have a very difficult time being served now. Years ago, that wasn't the case, there was facilities around that took care of that issue. Not so much anymore. I think you can still do that, but still accomplish it, but it's not like it was, so I don't know. I mean, I'm shooting from the hip, John said a little bit here, but I think that's a group of people that we probably need to get some attention to, probably more so at the state level than maybe even at the local, but yeah.
Thank you. Bob Fleming?
I think we should all be sensitive to the needs of all of our citizens, and especially those that are in need of food and shelter and what have you. I'm a great admirer of the Salvation Army. I think what they do in this community is great, and anything we can do to support them. I also think what United Way has done in this community over the years. Granted, I wish we could do more than we do, but there are a lot of people in this community that do contribute to these events to help solve some of these problems with the poor and the underprivileged. We should continue to do that, I mean, it's a never-ending job.
Thank you. Linda Murray?
I echo what Bob said. I conclude everyone almost on this list, the median income of Burlington is only around $44,000. There's a lot of people that are suffering, there's a lot of people that are hurting out there, not only seniors, but disabled, mentally challenged, like Bill said, single families with children come to mind. I just want you to now, just to envision someone, the picture of hunger. The picture of hunger in Burlington, no one ever gets this question, it's actually a male aged 40 to 60. So we are, some people in our community are hurting, and there is lots of things we can do to help them.
Thank you. Matt Rinker?
Tanner, could I ask you to repeat the question? By the time it gets here, portions of it have been forgotten at that point.
Who in Burlington most needs help, and what help do they need?
So I would echo everything that everybody has already said. We do need to be very cognizant of the needs of a multitude of the people living in our community. Depending on who you talk to, that issue's gonna be different. But if I had to pick one group of people that need the most help, I'd say it's the group of people that sit at this table on Monday evenings, which is one of the reasons why I'm running, so.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
And Tanner? Thank you very much, and now we go to Rob Sussman, Pritchard Broadcasting, and you are going to ask the questions?
Yeah, I'm going to be asking questions to all of you. I'm gonna have one question, and then every single one of you is going to answer, and we're going to start every single one with Matt this time. That way, it's fair.
All right, there you go.
Or fair enough, I suppose. It's as fair as we're gonna get. All right, so the first thing I'm gonna ask is, yesterday, I attended a very interesting meeting, a community workshop, on the Burlington area-wide plan, which is specifically about downtown.
In Brownfield, yeah.
It contained a lot of very interesting discussions, there were a lot of pictures, there were a lot of maps, and there were, and people were talking about all sorts of different ideas about the vision for downtown in the future. What is your version? What is your vision for downtown Burlington?
Well, my vision is one where we've got a booming small business entity, which we've seen as considerable achievements in that in the last 10, 15 years. I'd also like to see an increased level of tourism, and we have the potential in our downtown area to see a significant amount of investment in the residential side of things. We've got a lot of space and a lot of buildings, but those buildings require a lot of money in order to be upgraded to a point where they're livable. Best-case scenario, that's the case, is every building is full of residences and businesses, and people are making money and driving to Burlington to shop, and coming here for events at the Memorial Auditorium, and attending parades, and being lively in the downtown area. That's best-case scenario. That's best-case scenario, but that requires a significant amount of investment, a, a good vision, and a lot of leadership.
Mrs. Murray?
I think that Burlington could really capitalize on the history. I asked questions of a lot of people, and I polled a young minister, a young wife that who was a minister, and she had small children. She's traveled all over Canada, Europe, and the United States, and I said, what is it that draws you and your family to go visit a community? And she says, those communities that have a small town, like, in essence of a small town, where we've got the recreated school and church and grocery store. She says it's not their reality, and they love that. Burlington has all these old buildings. We've got the log cabin. We've got lots of old schools. I think we could really capitalize that. And I want to recreate in Burlington the feel of Ragbri, and those of you that have ever been in Ragbri know what's that's like. The air smells sweeter, the food tastes better, everybody's happy. I really think that we could capitalize on our, our riverfront, our historical buildings, and make every day in Burlington special.
Mr. Fleming?
I think downtown is already coming alive. I mean, if you look at the number of apartments and so forth that have developed in the last four or five years, I mean, it's tremendous. I also think you have to look at the broader view. I mean, Burlington maybe isn't as unique as some of us think it is. They're a major metropolitan area. Minneapolis is a good example, where not that many years ago, people were leaving the downtown and moving out to suburban areas where there was more parking and all the malls. And they've seen a complete regression, a reversal of that now. And I think Burlington, granted, it's not a Minneapolis, but we have a great downtown. It's already starting to develop, and I think you're going to see more of it. And I think that's a healthy situation, and I'm going to do everything I can to help support those ventures. Thank you.
Mr. L.
Well, I think I probably have to agree with Bob to a great extent. I agreed with him a little bit, so I guess it's fair for me to do that now. But the downtown, I think, is coming back. When you asked the question, I was thinking back, you know, like 40 years ago. Wow, it was kind of bustling then. It was really, really pretty good shape. And then they went through the lower economic period where everything kind of went bad. But now, there's, there's a lot of buildings. It's been infilled, literally, remodeled and occupied. There's business and industry and whatever down here now. Not, probably not industry, but there's more business now than there used to be. I think there's probably an opportunity and a chance for a hotel or motel to come down here shortly, so we'll see, but, yeah.
Mr. Deal?
Downtown Burlington is finally, it's taken 20, 25 years to finally get downtown Burlington bustling a little bit. And that is in direct, despite what the city has done. The city has spent thousands upon thousands of wasted dollars trying to help downtown Burlington. They don't want the damn government involved. I spoke to several people in businesses in downtown Burlington that said they are bustling despite what the city keeps doing. They would love to see the city to get the hell out of the way and let them do their business, and they're doing great now because the city finally is backing off, but they have spent thousands of wasted tax dollars, and that needs to end because downtown Burlington is doing well finally.
Mr. Billups?
Okay, well, well, actually, it, I would agree with some of the sentiments of people that spoke before. It's actually happening now. If you look, we have a robust upper-story developments going on. Went by the Tama Building the other day. That's going to be a fantastic addition. I do think we have some parking issues coming, but the city addressed parking on, on the 200 block. That was much needed to be able to provide some relief to those merchants down there. When you can provide parking, then those merchants infill on the first floor. So, I, I think that's something we need to work on, continue to work on parking. I think there should be some more parking available once the police building comes down. I'd like to see us do what Fort Madison does with their alleyways. Quite honestly, if you go down there and walk downtown, they take a couple alleyways, and they've dressed them up, they've made them so they're clean, they're bright, you walk through them, and it's a shortcut through downtown. Young professionals did that on one of the alleys, and hopefully they'll continue that project. When I was on, sorry, I'm out of time.
There you go. Rob?
Now, some of you have been asked about this already, but I'm going to open it up for everyone, and if you have answered the question, feel free to expound more. The city recently had an opportunity to take advantage of a grant that would have funded either a splash pad, shade structure, or auditorium seating, or some combination of the three. They chose to pass on all of them and hold off until next year to apply again, when it could be possibly more expensive. What are your thoughts on this move? We will actually start with Linda this time.
As I mentioned before, my initial reaction was, oh, no. I just felt really disjointed, disappointed comes to mind as well. And then I had to regroup, and yes, it's probably going to cost us 30% more in the future, but I agree with Bob that we have to make sure our ducks are all in a row. I don't think that the, the situation was entirely researched like it needed to be. The city had a lot of fish to fry, and we have to make sure that we're, that we're ready, that everything lines up, so we don't make a mistake. As the mayor mentioned, you know, concrete's kind of forgiving. If we go ahead and bust that concrete up, concrete's up rather than put something in that doesn't work, and we've got to try and remedy the situation due to frozen pipes and things, that's not the direction we want to move in. So, I think being cautious and then proceeding next year, we have the option two more times to renew this. I think that's, that's the best policy, is to be conservative at this time.
Mr. Fleming?
Well, I'll repeat what I said earlier. I want to see some nice things happen on the riverfront. I'm not opposed to splash pads or anything else along that line. To me, it was just premature. We weren't ready to actually commit to any of those entities. So, by the fact that we didn't move now, doesn't mean we're not going to move forward in the future. But I think we find in city government, sometimes you have to have patience. You can't just jump in when the opportunity presents itself. So, I hope we can do some nice things on the riverfront, and I think we will. We just can't commit to that at this time.
Mr. L.
Well, I, I, I'm okay with the fact that they did not move ahead. I'm probably a little bothered by when grants slipped by you, but on the other hand, I, I think our riverfront has the potential to be really something pretty good. You asked about the vision before. My vision, I guess, for that riverfront is something pretty spectacular, and I'm okay with what they did because I didn't, I, I, I don't think they had a plan. I'd like to see a, a nice master plan for that riverfront before we piecemeal it together, so, thank you.
Mr. Deal?
I agree 100%, and I'm glad that the, the city council right now decided to pass on these plans, because, boy, there's priorities in this city that are more important than splash pads and all this fun stuff on the riverfront. I would love to see a vibrant riverfront someday, but priorities, priorities, priorities. All I keep hearing is that our crime is outrageous, our taxes are too high, we have dilapidated neighborhoods, we have potholes in our streets. These are things that need to be addressed first before we start talking about splash pads and the riverfront. That would be great, but let's get our priorities straight in this town for once.
Mr. Billups?
Well, I, you know, the way the motions were worded, it was doomed for failure, so in, in, in respect to the fact that we did not have all the information, while I was disappointed, none of the amenities were voted on and, and were passed, I was somewhat relieved because I think one of the things that I could do if you elect me for city council is help with this process. I mean, the Facebook survey was a good attempt, but not enough. If you really want to get the impact and the input from the citizens, there's several different ways to reach out where it's not something that could be manipulated. The Facebook survey, you could vote on it a few times. I think we could have reached out to the media, our brethren in, in running this city, and, and use their databases for possibly a Survey Monkey or that type of thing, or worked with the chamber a little bit more as a unified group to decide, is this what Burlington wants? And let's make sure we have our cost factors lined up and in, in line. Matt had, had mentioned some foundations were willing to contribute on the, I'm going to go over just a little bit, contribute on the, up, up, the maintenance and upkeep of it, and we didn't have time to explore that. Thank you.
Mr. Rinker?
Yeah, so I'm going to just, I'm going to disagree with just about everybody up here and say that, yes, we needed the splash pad. I've already reiterated that a couple of questions ago, as to my viewpoint on that. I think the, the biggest underlying problem that we have is the way we do business and the ability, our ability to maximize the money we spent was hurt by the vote that was made by the city council. At the end of the day, it was their job to be educated on the issue, and they knew that that issue was coming up, so for them to come into council chambers and then vote on the issue without all of the information, kind of highlights some of the issues that we have currently on the city council. I, I did all the research, and I did it over a period of an hour or so, and I had more information walking into here than they did, and to me, that's somewhat unacceptable, given that they're currently the elected officials that are, that are here to do that. At the end of the day, if we decide we're going to move forward with this project in the future, it's going to cost us $50,000 more because we didn't do it this year. So, that's one of the things, the, the issues that I have with that.
All right, I'm going to do, do we have time for one more?
Right.
Okay, all right, I'm going to, I'm going to ask one more. This one's, you can be a little bit more concise if you'd like. It's going to be one of those more big-brain philosophy questions. If you serve through your term on the city council, how do you want to be remembered? What legacy would you want to leave? And we'll start with Bob.
I'm not in this for legacy. I just hope that people realize that I'm someone that likes Burlington. I'm trying to do the best job I can. I think I'm a good listener. I have a great respect for the city manager, and, I don't know, I just like to think things through. I think my business experience helps, so I'm going to keep doing that. Thank you.
Mr. L.
Oh, boy, that's, that's a tough one.
This is kind of legacy, too.
I, I don't think I really am after a legacy necessarily. No, I just want to be effective. I, I guess I'd want to be remembered as effective, efficient, and, and kind of a people person. I think that'd be, that'd be good.
Mr. Deal?
I don't have any legacy that I want to leave behind. The main thing I want people to know is that I listen to them and that I am willing to follow through on complaints, like Tim Scott, our former city councilman. He was the only one that responded to citizen complaints, and he did it in a timely manner, and he did it correctly. I want to be remembered as someone that is always there for the people. There is a million things I could say, and there's so little time to say it, but I'm a people person, I'm a listener, like Mr. Fleming said. I don't think he listens as well as I do. I continually listen to the majority voice of the people that say crime is a problem, we need to address it, and that high taxes and dilapidated neighborhoods and our roads are pathetic. This is what we need to address, and no one else on this board is willing to say it but me.
Mr. Billups?
Well, I think the legacy kind of takes care of itself. I think we're all up here because we want Burlington to be a better spot, a better place to live, we want to help our citizens, and so in that regard, I really don't worry about the legacy, but I would like to be remembered as someone that worked their tail off, someone that was responsive to all citizens in all areas of all needs, and that thought things through before they made the decisions. I'd like to be remembered as the good old boy, and the good old boy that loved his town and took care of his town. And, boy, that, if I could, if I could go to my grave knowing that I tried to make a difference, I'd be a happy man, so, thank you.
Mr. Rinker?
So, like the other candidates, I'm not here for personal gain. At the end of the day, I'm hoping that people associate myself and the time, my time on the council with somebody who brought back a long-term vision to our community, provided great leadership in order to be able to achieve a lot of the goals, such as reducing taxes, reducing our crime rates, and growing our community, and somebody who's served honorably.
Mrs. Murray?
I'd like to be remembered as a team player. I think that I would fit in well with the current council members, along with almost everyone sitting up here I consider my good friends. I think I would be a good fit. Out-of-the-box thinker. I come up with wild ideas that, that people have never tried before. Some of them don't work, but hey, you don't know unless you try. Fiscally responsible as owner of my own business, dietitian magician nutrition, you have to be fiscally responsible. I love to do research, so if an issue came up like the splash pad, I could go ahead and, and research that. I love asking people for their input, and I've been doing quite a bit of that. I would like to be remembered for getting an interpretive center going, particularly for a one-room schoolhouse, which I am very passionate about, and I think along with that, we could maybe consider a railroad museum, or a World War II museum, or, or something like that. And the number one thing, massive biking, running trail system throughout Burlington. We could bring them here, we just have to build it, and they will come. Thank you.
Are you finished then, Bob?
That's all I have, yeah.
That's all you have? Okay. We're probably going to deviate from our format a little bit because we're going to cut the second set of questions by the press. They said they, if that's okay with them. I mean, I would think we talked about it, and they said they pretty much ask you all the questions all the time anyway, and so we're going to do some questions from the public now, and then we'll have a chance, give you a chance to do a little bit of a summation. And in a way, this is a little bit redundant, but this questioner asks, wants to know, please tell us one good thing about Burlington that keeps you living here. And so, let's begin with Bill L.
One good thing, huh? Well, unlike some people, I wasn't born and raised here. I came here and I chose Burlington, and Burlington didn't choose me. One good thing, huh? Well, I don't know how to do that. I've, I've been involved in about 50 different good things, everything from Boy Scouts, the United Way, the, all these things. There's a lot of good things. I like the size of this community. I'd like to see some growth here, not necessarily a big city. I just would like to see infill it or whatever, but I, I'm, I'm happy with Burlington. I just want to help make it a little better here with what we have, so that's about it. I can't give you one specific thing. Yeah, that's not going to work.
Thank you. Scott Deal?
I'd like to echo Mr. L. I wasn't born and raised here, but my wife was, and my mother-in-law was, and so I do have a background with a lot of natives in this town. But the, the one thing that sticks out for me in this community that I think is absolutely wonderful, and I love to, to expound upon the positives and, positives in this town, and that's the parks. We have absolutely gorgeous, good parks. When you talk about the south end of town, you talk about Dankworth Park, and you talk about Crapo Park, especially Crapo Park in my heart, because it is, it's a quiet park, it's something you can go through, it's an arboretum. It's beautiful. There is very few towns of this size that have anything comparable to what we have. The park system is great.
Thank you. Bob Fleming?
I was born and raised here, and my wife and I raised five kids in this community. I think that speaks well for our school system, and I think it, it speaks well for the community, the fact that we were able to live here in a happy mode, if you will. We were able to have decent jobs. We had fun in this community with our parks and so forth. To me, it's just a nice community. In my business work, I travel all over the country, and there are many great places, but I always came back and said, Burlington, I'm very comfortable with this town. I like it.
Linda Murray?
I'm going to go out on a limb and say the weather. The weather here is moderate most days of the year. I know those of you that are warming up your snow blowers are going to disagree with me, and that's okay. But most of the time, I feel that the weather is, is fair and allows me to shop downtown, and we have boutiques down there on equal, anything fine in Chicago. We have a plethora of restaurants, so I can get out and get whatever kind of food I want. My family spends a lot of time at the lakes and the parks. We enjoy fishing, we enjoy recreation. recreation activities, Stars Cave, Big Hollow. We have a low commute time to work, and I love that. I just got back from a trip to Chicago, it took me two hours to get into McCormick Place every day, on the going side and the coming back side, and believe me, that, less than 10-minute time in, in Burlington. And we have wonderful music here. You can go downtown, grab yourself a micro beer, listen to a fantastic band. I really feel we have a high quality of life here in Burlington. Thank you.
Okay, John Billups.
It's easy for me, it's the people. I mean, you, you, anywhere you go in Burlington, you see the church groups, the volunteer groups, people holding out their hand, helping their fellow neighbor. You see entrepreneurs trying new and different things and, and investing their dollars in the community. You see volunteers, people willing to, to put themselves up here for this and run for public office when we know we're going to be questioned and ridiculed from time to time and have people say things about our lifestyles. And despite that, the people in Burlington are the ones that make it worthwhile, the, everywhere you go in this community, there's empathy, sympathy, passionate people working toward the betterment of Burlington. And the naysayers used to, used to own Burlington. I remember growing up in the eighties, they called them the cave group or the naysayers. They're, they're not in power anymore, the positive people are. Thanks.
Thank you. Matt Rinker.
People, people keep me here. So, I've got a lot of family here, I've got a lot of friends here. I'm involved in numerous organizations. I'm on the board for the Burlington Rotary Club, I participate with Shop the Cop, and I'm in probably a dozen other volunteer organizations, and those people are what make our community great, and being able to work with those people in order to, to achieve small victories, that's the reason I'm still here.
Thank you. We had a question already about the, I think the contract with, for the auditorium, so I'm not going to ask that question. I think we've covered it as much as we can in the shorter time. This question has kind of a negative side to it, in a way, but also a positive. It's, it's the one, it's the issue that keeps popping up in the news all the time because it makes headlines. It's the one about crime, and how do you plan to correct or, or to address the issue of the perceived and perhaps real issue of crime in our city? What do you think would be something that we could do to make that better? Or, I should say reduce it, don't make crime better, but just reduce it, it sounds a lot better that way. But anyway, so, let's begin with Scott Deal.
Oh, boy. This is my number one campaign issue for the last eight months. Whether it's perceived or whether it's real, that just depends on who you're talking to. If you look at the press, we have serious, serious issues when it comes to crime, and when I talk to people every single day, and I talk to groups, even more groups than I ever talked to before, that is their number one concern, whether it's perceived or not. We need to continually reach out to people in this community and help them. We need to give them the resources, the tools, and availability, and I want to work with the police, the, the police chief, and do whatever it takes to resolve our crime issue and reduce it to the best of our abilities.
Okay, thank you. Lynda Murray.
I know that perception is some people's reality. If we talk to the police chief, crime actually is down in Burlington. I know with all the scuttlebutt going on, people don't believe that, but it actually is, as Bill L. calls it, the in-your-face kind of crime. The violent crime has taken a spike, but that has taken a spike nationwide, so it's spiked in Fargo, North Dakota, it's spiked in Des Moines, Iowa, it's spiked in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, so that is a universal theme that we're hearing. I firmly believe that prevention is worth a pound of cure, and the police are doing a lot they can, doing an awful lot to integrate into the neighborhoods and into the schools. There's a lot of projects going on, like community get-togethers, potlucks, the turquoise table project, a lot of things we can do on that end, and I know I'm out of time, so thank you.
Okay, John Billups.
Well, all you have to do is look at the national media, and you, you see the crime cells, and so it's, it's being talked a lot about, talked a lot about it, a lot. There we go, got that out. Crime cells, and unfortunately, you're right, that what Bill said and Lynda said, the in-your-face crime is what we're really experiencing right now. I think as a city councilperson, what we have to do is support our very competent and, professional police department. I think we encourage them, we encourage them to do a good job, we also encourage our citizens to get involved on several fronts. If you see something suspicious, call it in. And I think the other thing we can do as leaders, because it was brought up about mental health earlier, we can, we're supposed to be the leaders of this community, so we can band together and we can say, hey, we represent the city of Burlington, and even though I liked Terry Branstad, he was my governor for a long point in time, he really blew it on the mental health closures, and I think we need to go back after him and say, hey, city, the state government, we need this corrected. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Rinker.
So, on crime, I've spoken already a little bit about the fact that we need to make sure that we're providing our local law enforcement agencies the tools necessary in order for them to be successful. As I was continuing to say, but I ran out of time on the previous question on the issue, I'd like to see us bring another canine on, on our department. Right now, we only have one. If you take away the number of days that the officer needs to have off, training days, Kelly days, things like that, there's not a whole lot of active time where that canine's available or on the road actively doing things in order to prevent drug trafficking, things like that. I'd like to see us put together a couple of community organizations. There are great examples across our country where some of those organizations have been successful in eliminating a lot of petty crime and trafficking in neighborhoods, which ultimately will eliminate the more violent crime. I think perception is correct. Crime, if you look at the numbers, is down in our community. However, you can have a significant decrease in petty crime and have one shooting, and then it creates a perception that crime is up. So, those are some of the issues that we're gonna have to tackle.
Thank you. Bill L.
Well, I think everybody has said, and I, I can't disagree with much anyone said at all, the crime in-your-face is, is very real, the stats are down. I'm agreeing probably with everyone up here that I think if I were elected, I'd be supportive of our police chief and, and the police department, and try to promote whatever thinking in, in their minds we could to, to address this crime thing. I don't know what those are, I'm not gonna pretend to know how to solve the crime. If I did, I would be outselling that someplace.
I think we always have crime with us, but, you know, whatever.
Thanks.
Bob Fleming.
You know, as a councilman, there's only so much we can do. Obviously, we want to support our police department and all the good things they are doing to try to minimize crime in our community. I think as a citizen, though, there are things we should and can do to get more citizens to pay attention to what's going on in their neighborhoods. We all sit back and wait for the cop to come forward, and that's not all bad, but I think a lot of us as individual citizens can do more to notify the police and proper authorities with problems in their neighborhood. That's being done in other communities very successfully, and I think we can do more of it here. And again, continue to support an excellent police department that we now have.
Another question, and I, we'll just get the response from a couple of you, but, and hold this, because we have to pause for a station break here shortly.
Just about 10 seconds.
In 10, in 10 seconds?
No, 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 no. The break is only gonna take 10 seconds. We just need to pause for it.
One of, one of the questioners wants to know about programs, bringing in programs to help underprivileged or disadvantaged, how we want to phrase that, and one that comes to my mind is Bridges Out of Poverty, and I don't know how many people are aware of that or anything like that, but what other kinds of programs, or what, what, what is your feeling about those types of programs? Do you think, you know, in addition to what we're already doing? Where can you see that coming from with the council? Is there any support for it in the council?
Are we, are we going out of turn, or?
We're just around the table. Go ahead, John.
Of course, I think every, I think everybody up here would support those programs. Bridges Out of Poverty is a fantastic program. You know, so, you know, I don't want to speak for the others, but, you know, I think we support and encourage, and we lead where we can, and we do what we can as city council. Some of those things we can impact, some we can't.
Okay, thank you, John.
Pause for 10 seconds for station identification. Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, we're back in business here. Did you have anything you wanted to add with that?
Not, not really, no.
But how do you see the council being able to do this?
Well, I, I don't know. I mean, there are some times we can possibly lead the way, whether, if they need a place to meet, if they, if they're looking for a structure, we have, we have city lots for sale, that type of thing. I, I would have to see what each individual group needs and then work from there.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Scott, Deal.
I'm in support of any organization, any group of people that are willing to uplift the greater Burlington area.
Do you see a way that the city council can help?
In a lot of ways, yes, and echoing what Mr. Billups said, you know, we can provide a forum for them to speak, we can help them, we can help them in locations where they want to meet, we can, there's a lot of different areas where the city council can help them without spending any taxpayer dollars, because I'm against spending taxpayer dollars on these things. But there are a multitude of areas that the city council can help and will help, and I will help.
Thank you. Bill L.
Well, I think over the years, the city has kind of weaned themselves from volunteer organizations and things like that in terms of financial support, but I, I think anybody here would have to be receptive to things like, like we talked about here, and I would probably echo what Scott has said here, they, they, we could support them a forum, by providing the forum, we could support them with a place to meet. The dollars gets a lot more difficult when you start considering financial support because it's not always possible, but it depend on what it is, I think, and have to have, be something, you know, more definite, I guess.
Bob Fleming.
Well, obviously, if we can find ways to support people that are trying to help those in need, we should do it. On the other hand, when you think about it, our role as a city council is restricted, if you will. I mean, our primary job is public safety and taking care of our public works, our streets and so forth, and granted, that's not the most glamorous part of the business, but those are our primary responsibilities. And I think if we as a council do our job well in the areas we're supposed to be working in, it's gonna create an atmosphere in this community where the community's trying to take care of those that are underprivileged, or undernourished, or what have you, will find ways that they can really flourish, and I, I think that's the key thing, but I, I think we overpromise as a council member, if I tell people, we'll take care of your problems. We're not equipped to do that, and that's not our job, but any way we can do to support and improve, you know, the quality of life in this community, let's do it.
Thank you. Lynda Murray.
I echo Bob's sentiments in that city council is there to be supportive entity, and sometimes we've had representation on some of these meetings. I know the mayor has participated in some of the CAP meetings in the past, and I went to one earlier this year. Yeah, I think if we can provide representation, if we have manpower for that, I know we don't have the dollars, but sometimes representation, so they feel supported, is important, and we might be able to tie in with marketing efforts. I know Annie Wilson is always good about letting people know what's coming up in the community, being supportive that way, maybe perhaps printing something in the Friday fax, so there are ways that we can be supportive without necessarily getting into the, to the bank.
Thank you. Matt Rinker.
So, Diane, I'm a giant supporter of those types of programs and the groups that put those programs on. Recently, I've contributed financially to help support some of those programs. I've also helped set some of them up from, from creating the groundwork and then implementing the program and, and watching it grow and flourish. As far as the, what the city council can do, there's, they're very limited, like what Bob says, we can't create giant grants and give them out, there's just not the funding, things like that. However, we can create policies that are gonna provide a low-crime environment, which will hopefully allow, once they get a leg up, to be able to continue moving up and better themselves. And then the other thing that the city council can do that nobody's mentioned yet is create good economic policies so that we see growth in our community, which will also allow for those people to go out and get good, sustainable, long-term jobs and create careers, so ultimately, they're not falling back into where they were when they needed the help that they needed.
Okay, I thank you, and we're essentially out of time and out of questions that haven't been addressed to some degree, and so at this time, we would like you to kind of give a summation or a rebuttal, or tell us something about what you're gonna bring to this that we haven't heard before, hopefully. A fresh, fresh face here, okay? Do you want a minute and a half, or you, you just want the minute? I think I'm gonna give you 90 seconds. Okay, and I'm gonna begin, have this begin with Bob Fleming.
Okay. I just, in that I'm already on the council, I'd like to continue serving because I think we have a good program going. We have a city manager that's doing an excellent job, we have a lot of great city employees that are well-motivated and performing well, and if I can play a role in continuing to support those entities, that's what I want to do, because we're going in the right direction, we're, we're making improvements in many areas in this community, and I want to be a part of that.
Thank you very much for running for office. Scott Deal.
Well, from the onset, I'm the outsider among these six, and I'm grateful and surprised that I made it to the top six, being an outsider and being as outspoken as I have been. The people's voice, and I keep saying the people's voice, and I keep saying the majority of the people's voice needs to be heard. Unfortunately, and to my dismay, we only had 1,700 people roughly vote in the primary, which is appalling and pathetic. This is supposed to be the United States of America, not Russia, China, or a third-world country, and I'm gonna tell you, and I'm gonna put these people, you know, to the test. Are you willing to vote for the, for the future of your children and your grandchildren? I'm here, ready and willing to help you if you want my help. I'm only here to help people. I have no agenda, no connections, no business ventures, no anything involved with this city like others here, and there were over 15,000 people that are registered voters that did not vote, and I'm challenging them to come out and vote on November the 7th. I don't care if they vote for me or not, just get out and vote.
Thank you. Now, we will go to Matt Rinker.
Okay, sorry, I wasn't prepared for that, I thought we were going around. So, I think I bring a lot of things to the table, first being a lot of fresh ideas. I am a fresh face, this will be my first term on this council. I also bring to the table a long and a short-term vision and a long-term vision. I have a strong education in things like economics, law enforcement, and infrastructure. You walked out of the room and didn't give me somebody to look at, so.
I am so sorry.
There's people out there, man.
There are, but she's asking the question, so.
I was listening.
And, so, yeah, kind of broke my train of thought there, but anyways, that, those are some of the things that I bring to the table. Like I've said before in many of these other forums, I've sat down and taken the time Like I've said before in many of these other forums, I've sat down and taken the time to talk with people, with our department heads in our, in our community, with the city of Burlington, or Jim Fernando, the city manager, or current council members. I've also taken the time to sit down with private entities in our community and determine what are they looking for in, in order to be able to make some more long-term investments. And I bring all that stuff to the table. I've, I've got a lot of life experiences, even though I'm the youngest guy sitting at this table. But I, I believe that I'm bringing solutions, and I believe that they'll have a dramatic and positive effect.
Thank you, Matt. And I am sorry, I had to leave.
No, that's okay. I was following you out the room, so.
Well, very good. You know, teachers have eyes in the backs of their hands, whatever. Anyway, John Billups.
Well, I appreciate everybody's support during the primary, and I would like to ask you for your support again. I would really appreciate your vote. You know, the wheel was invented a long, long time ago, and they've been working on it. It's still not perfected, but they still work on it. And that's the way I feel about Burlington. Burlington's been around for a long time, it's gonna be around for a lot longer, but I think together, we can work on it, continue to make it better, more efficient. So I, I, I have shown leadership on different groups. I've been involved, I've been a leader, I've been a follower, a consensus builder, and I'd like to bring those talents to the city council. By the same token, I know that I'm not the smartest man in the, in the room, that's always in the back of my mind, so I listen to everybody, because that's where you learn. So please, like Scott said, though, please go out and vote. Whether you vote for me or not, please vote, get out and vote, because blood's been spilled, and people have died for you to have this right. And that's what, that's what we're supposed to do in America, and, and I'd really appreciate your vote, but I'd also appreciate your vote for any one of these candidates. Thanks.
Thank you, John. And now, we will go to Bill L.
Okay, thank you, Diane. Let me thank you again for inviting me tonight. I've, I've had the opportunity to be here before, so there's a couple of observations that I made, and rather than try to convince you of anything, I, I really think one of the things that we probably overlooked in, in, when I was here before, and maybe even now, is that we, we don't really even educate our, our citizens very much. They really don't know. There's, there's people sitting at this table who've said things that are really kinda difficult. And one of the things that come to my mind is, all monies can't be spent for all things. We don't have a, the city doesn't have one single big pot that you pour it all in. You gotta take these little pieces out of here and spend it on infrastructure. Over here, you gotta spend it on this, the, the things that George, or that, George, I'm sorry, George. The things, no one's ever done that, yeah. What Matt said, you know, about the riverfront, that, that whole grant thing was a different thing. You can't spend that money for crime. It's gonna have to be spent for that kind of thing. And otherwise, you don't get it at all. But I don't know that people really understand that. And Bob talked a little bit about what the duty of a councilman was, a council person. What, what he had, he's charged with quality of life, and he's charged with infrastructure. What, give me just a second, Don. But what, what, this quality-of-life issue is really very difficult, because on one hand, you're talking about safety, the other side, you're talking about arts and culture. If you take all the safety away, you're gonna have chaos. If you take all the arts and culture away, people aren't gonna stay, they're gonna go. So there's a lot of things we need to do, but thank you. That was just.
Thank you.
Past experience.
I appreciate it. Lynda Murray.
Thanks, Diane. I appreciate being invited here, as always, and I appreciate the Burlington Professional Women's Group hosting this. And since they are hosting it, I do wanna spend just a moment to tell our viewers how, as a woman, I think I can lend a unique edge to the city council. Burlington voters are 52% female, and there has been an inclusion and diversity gap that has existed for a long time. I think I can help to bridge that, as well as be a team player. I know Annie Wilson's doing a great job, but I think I could, I could also help her along the way. So saying that, I do appreciate everyone that voted in the primary, that was fantastic. However, in order for me, I'm the underdog in this, in order for me to bump up, I'm gonna need everybody to grab a friend and take them to the polls, grab your spouse and take them to the polls. You don't have a spouse, grab a bus, fill it up and take it to the polls. There was actually a woman at Spoon River that said she would fill a bus up, and I said, hey, all right, I'm all for that. Bring the bus to the polls. So I am fairly short at 5'3", but a vote for me would produce a lengthy legacy of exemplary service for Burlington City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. And I thank each of you, John Billups, Scott Deal, Bill L., Bob Fleming, Lynda Murray, and Matt Rinker, for, for running to try to help and serve Burlington. I thank Tanner Cole from the Hawkeye, and Rob Sussman from Pritchard Broadcasting, the city of Burlington, obviously, for the space, and for the people that have called in questions, and the people that are here tonight, and the people that helped out. VPW has, you know, is kinda throwing out a challenge. I think last time, we got about 12% of the voters in Burlington, and let's see if we can't up that to 25%. That's not a huge, huge upswing. It should be far greater than that.
Yes.
But let's try to better ourselves. We only have so much time in this life, and so let's make the time we have be really awesome. So let's get out there and vote. And just a quick reminder, go to the polls, November 7th. If you do, the, we have three polling places in Burlington. Oak Street Baptist Church, and that's precincts 1, 2, and 3. Messiah Lutheran Church, and that is precincts 4, 5, and 9. And Bethany Lutheran Church, in precincts 6, 7, and 8. They're open from 7:00 a.m. till 8:00 p.m. So that's an opportunity. Also, absentee voting is now available, and if you don't wanna do the absentee, but you wanna vote ahead of time, go to the Des Moines County Courthouse, to the auditor's office. You can even take the elevator, if you don't wanna walk, and cast your vote there. So it will count. And once again, thank you. This has been broadcast live, and it's being livestreamed, and we appreciate everyone who's participated. Thank you. Get out and vote, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you.
Thanks.[1765.12]